We will call this hearing to order. Will clerk, please call the roll.
Mark?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
Ron?
Here.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Here.
John, oops, sorry, Eric?
Eric is listening on the phone. He hasn't been sworn into office yet.
And Jay?
Here.
Okay, that gives us six of Assemblyman members here today for this hearing. Now time for the voluntary pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, today we are here for, well, before we get started, would everybody turn their phones to silent or off, please? Today it's, we're here for a public hearing for Aaron Miller's appeal of a notice and order of nuisance abatement at 107 Arnaz Heights Drive. And at this point, we'll have the borough clerk, Debbie Thompson, read the process to be used for a hearing of this nature. So Debbie, would you read that, please?
Read it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jim Brennan. I don't know if you can hear me. I can barely hear you and the Assembly members.
Uh, maybe we could have our technician adjust that. Is it getting any better?
I'll try to turn it up.
Is it any better now, Jim?
Yes, absolutely. This is fine.
Okay, can you, okay, perfect. All right, so Debbie will need the process to be used today.
The hearing will be recorded and any testimony will be under oath administered by the presiding Assembly member, Mayor Jensen. The hearing will be conducted in public session. The appellant, the department director, and the owners of the properties affected by the notice and order for nuisance abatement will be the only parties allowed to present argument. The parties may be represented by counsel. Argument and public testimony will be limited to the legal and factual grounds for appeal as raised by the parties. Public testimony will be limited to two minutes. Those presenting argument may be asked questions by the members of the Borough Assembly only. The order of presentation is set out as follows. The appellant will present the grounds for appeal of the notice and order for nuisance abatement and may offer documents and testimony of the appellant or other witnesses in support of their appeal. The department director will present the findings and conclusions which were the basis for the abatement order and may offer documents and testimony of herself or other witnesses in support of the abatement order. The owners of the properties affected by the notice and order for nuisance abatement may present testimony and/or argument. Public testimony may then be presented. And then the appellant will be allowed time for responsive argument and may offer additional testimony in support of his appeal. Both the department director and the appellant may cross-examine witnesses under reasonable time limits adopted by Mayor Jensen. The presiding Assembly member, Mayor Jensen, shall establish reasonable time limits for the parties to present arguments. After argument has been completed, the Borough Assembly shall close the argument portion of the hearing and will proceed with motion matters and deliberations to decide the appeal. The decision must be rendered within ten days after the hearing. The appellant shall bear the burden of proof and that the notice and order for nuisance abatement appealed from was made in error. In making its decision, the Borough Assembly may reverse or affirm wholly or partly the notice and order for nuisance abatement, or may modify the order, and may make any order, requirement, decision, or determination which it determines appropriate under pertinent law. The Borough Assembly's formal action to grant or deny the appeal shall be subsequently formalized in writing and mailed to the appellant and affected landowners.
Okay, at this point in the hearing, we'll have our borough attorney kind of go over the guidelines, what can be talked about, what can't be talked about in the meeting. This is just a meeting for what was in this, just about the appeal, not about zoning changes or anything like that. Jim, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, okay, well, as you just stated, the mayor asked that I outline the types of evidence, and this is for the benefit both of the Assembly and the appellant and the public, that I outline the types of evidence that may be admitted in this hearing, both in support of and in opposition to the appeal. All testimony, evidence, and argument will be limited to the grounds for appeal stated in the notice of appeal filed by appellant Aaron Miller. The appellant, Mr. Miller, has asserted in his appeal that the borough has engaged in such selective enforcement of the zoning code to the extent it precludes storage on residentially zoned lots where no dwelling exists, that the zoning code should not be enforced in these circumstances. Evidence and testimony may be presented both in support of and in opposition to this assertion. Because the public notice of the hearing stated that written comments for those unable to attend could be submitted and will be read aloud at the hearing, several letters were submitted to the borough on behalf of the appellant prior to the hearing. These should be presented by the appellant, Mr. Miller, to identify the letters for the record. The borough should also present testimony and evidence demonstrating the basis for its enforcement order. This is an adjudicatory hearing to determine whether the zoning enforcement officers' finding of a violation in order of abatement was consistent with and authorized by the Petersburg Borough Code. This is not a forum to argue that the zoning code permitting only certain principal uses and accessory uses in a single-family residential zone area should be changed. That is a subject to be addressed by the Borough Assembly in its legislative role in considering a change to the zoning code, or it can be raised in an initiative petition to change the zoning code. But it is not the proper subject of this appeal hearing, and testimony and evidence that the zoning code is wrong and should be repealed or changed should not be permitted in this hearing. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And a couple things, before we get started, after I read this, we'll, we have a sign-up sheet over here, so anybody that wants to be a witness when we get to that part, if you sign in, then you could all be sworn in together, but then we'll have a list of the people that are going to want to testify. But like Mr. Brennan said, and like it says in the paper here, this hearing is on one topic only. It is about the abatement order by the Petersburg Borough for the owners of this property to remove items that are in violation of the borough's nuisance code. We will conduct ourselves in a civil manner and make no accusations of others' actions and just stay on topic. If I feel like the meeting or testimony is getting off track, I will stop the hearing and we will get the meeting back on track. So it's a one-topic hearing today. So with that being said, I believe it's time for the appellant and any witnesses he has. If you, are you going to call any witnesses today, Aaron?
Uh, no, I'll just do the voluntary.
Okay, so.
If they can come up and speak.
You need to stand and raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. You may proceed, thanks.
The description of the violation of Title 19 is storage in a single-family residential district. I believe this is vague and subject to multiple interpretations. It is, uh... Title 19 does not state that storage in a single-family residential area is not allowed. We have a current and paid-for building permit for the property that should constitute as the permitted use and storage as a customary accessory use. We've used this law as storage legally before the nuisance ordinance became law. This gives our property non-conforming status and immunity from the nuisance ordinance. This is also establishing an error in application of pertinent law. Selective enforcement even if the land, the law is valid. If storage in residential lots is prohibited and subject to nuisance violations in abatement, most of the residential lots in town will be in violation. That's my first phase there. That's, all that prior testimony was to establish an error in the application of the pertinent law, which was, uh, storage in a single-family residential district. And number two, I needed to establish the decision is not supported by adequate written findings. I believe the written findings are completely unsupported. We requested written findings and were told that the findings are issued as part of an The proof of the three separate complaints from neighbors was not provided to us, and that was part of your new nuisance order. Part of the new nuisance order, in order to, in order to give someone a nuisance order, you have to have three separate complaints from neighbors within 600 feet, I believe. And we were never given those names or the amount of complaints. We were told we will get findings of fact after the appeal, which to me seems biased and just another hurdle for us to jump, jump over. Moving on to phase three, establish the building official or planning commission failed to follow procedures. I believe they did so. The abatement is not the correct procedure for storage use on residential property, especially for a lot with years of history of legally using lot for storage with our CUPs, our multiple CUPs. And before, before we didn't need a CUP, we had gear stored there for years. And moving on to phase four, establish there was a misrepresentation of a fact. I believe there was. Storage in a single-family residential district is not a violation of Title 19. It is a false statement. Storage is allowed all over residential property in the Petersburg Borough, Service Area One. That's a fact. I think that's it for the beginning of our testimony.
Aaron, would you like to read the three letters?
Oh, yeah.
That were submitted?
Yeah, thanks.
And if it's available, say who they're, they're from.
Okay. These are the three letters in support of what we're doing as far as storage on our lot. First letter is from Bearinoff LLC. This is addressed to the Board of Appeals. In response to the notice of public hearing on the appeal of notice and order for nuisance abatement for Aaron Miller, Bearinoff LLC would like to oppose the nuisance violation. We are an industrial neighborhood. The closest three occupied neighbors are all industrial lots. The storage of commercial gear on the wrong fully zoned residential lot does not cause a nuisance to any of the closest neighbors, and they should be allowed to continue using their lot as storage should they choose to do so. Kind regards, Bearinoff LLC. The second letter is from Rock and Road Construction. And it's addressed to the Board of Appeals again, I'm sure. We at Rock and Road Construction Incorporated have no issues whatsoever with Aaron and Katrina Miller in the storage of commercial fishing gear. As their closest neighbor, it does not cause a nuisance to us and/or the neighborhood. Furthermore, we are absolutely in favor of allowing them to keep their gear on their And the third letter is from Richard Burrell. In regards to the notice of public hearing on appeal of notice and order for nuisance abatement, I, Richard Burrell, have no problems with Aaron and Katrina Miller in the storage of commercial fishing gear. As one of their closest neighbors, it does not cause a nuisance to me or anyone else in the neighborhood. I am in favor of allowing them to keep their gear on their residential lot. You know, I'm missing the, the protocol here. I don't have the paperwork. I can't really follow along what's going to, what's going to happen next.
Turn to the next page, Aaron, on your paper. So I guess at this point, if that's all of your testimony that you're going to present, if you don't have any witnesses, we'll move on to section two. We'll give you a little bit of time to digest it there.
I'll be a witness.
I think that comes later, Dad. I'm, I'm pretty sure. Is that right? I know the witnesses came out.
If he's going to be a witness on your side of the testimony, I think now is the appropriate time.
Now is, okay.
And he would need to, am I right on that, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to stay on topic and as best as possible here. I would, I would like the chance to speak to the department director when he gets done his findings, or at least have a responsive argument. I guess I get that.
You may cross-examine him, I believe, and ask him questions.
At the end of the, towards the end of the, okay, yeah.
That will be after all of the testimony, even by the public, too.
Okay, I'm ready for the witnesses.
Okay, so we need to add that to the list. Jim Miller would like to be a witness on, for Aaron Miller. Would you stand and raise your, and, to Jason? Okay, and Jason Miller as well. Raise your right hand. I'm not very familiar with this, so I'll just read it. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And Richard Burrell has already, he stood up to put his name into. Okay. So Jim, since you raised your hand first, you have to come to the podium here, state your name. And like was stated earlier in the meeting, which this is just about the, the appeal by Aaron and Katrina for the abatement order, so.
Just state my name?
Please.
Jim Miller. Jim Miller?
Yeah, that's, okay, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
Okay, every time he unloads, he gets three cents to the city.
That, um, I know it sounds like it's relevant, but this is just a discussion about the, I'm not very good at this position. It's one of my favorite parts about this elected position here, but that's my duty as being elected mayor and being a presiding officer. If you have a statement or a comment about thinking the, the abatement is wrong, we'll listen to that, okay?
I disagree with the, uh...
Well, that would be...
Lots.
Okay.
So every time he delivers to the city of Petersburg, he gets three cents. You get three cents. So that's what I'm going to do.
The raw fish, Ted?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. State your name, please.
Jason Miller. I support Aaron and his efforts. I disagree with the enforcement. Just looking around, there's plenty of issues to contend, but since we're just focused on this one particular issue, I support his efforts. I agree with his efforts. I disagree with the borough's enforcement of this. And as a property owner, I would hope that this process goes through fairly, which it sounds like it will, but regardless, I support Aaron's efforts. So. My mom can't hear me, so I'll speak up. I support Aaron's efforts. I don't support the borough's efforts in this particular issue. And as a property owner who owns industrial, commercial, and residential, I feel that I would assume if I were to go through a process like this, I would hope that it's clear and easy to understand and it's fair in its enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, for your testimony. Richard Burrell?
Yeah, my name is Richard.
Can you slide that a little closer, do you please, Richard? The microphone, or step closer to you, because that's when Jason thought he could hear. Yes, that's it.
Is that okay?
Can you, yeah.
My name is Richard Burrell, and I'm in favor of Aaron being able to store gear on his property. And the reason being is I've been a property owner out there for, wow, since 1980, '81. And the way, the way that it has been zoned, it's residential, commercial, all mixed together, and it's, and it's an absolute mess. There's no continuity at all.
We're just here to talk about their appeal to the abatement. We're not here to talk about zoning.
Oh, okay, all right.
Sorry.
Anyway, I just want you to know that I'm in favor of Aaron and Katrina there.
Okay.
All right? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else while we're here with the witness for the appellant? Okay, seeing none, we move to the next.
I just have one question. I'm one of the affected property owners. Is that coming up yet?
Yes.
When do the, I received one of the letters that were sent to affected property owners.
So do you want to testify? There is a section under public testimony, and you could do that later in the meeting after the borough presents their case, if you'd like. And we have a sign-in sheet for that, so, but that will be number four. Okay, so seeing no other witnesses to be called by the appellant, the department director will present the findings and conclusions which were the basis for the abatement order and may offer documents and testimony of herself or other witnesses in support of the abatement order. And at this point, I'll ask if you have any witnesses.
Just Joe.
So, just the two of you. Okay, you need to stand and take the oath. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Mayor, my name's Liz Cabrera. I'm Director of Community Development. As Mr. Brennan suggested, there's really two fundamental questions to be answered regarding the notice and order and the appeal. The first question is whether there was a violation of the zoning and nuisance ordinance as they exist. And although the appellant doesn't question whether there was a violation in his appeal, I think it's important to establish the fact that there was a violation. And secondly, is there selective enforcement of the ordinance? And I'd like to just go through a little bit of the background, because I think it helps inform how, how we got to where we are and why there is a violation. So just briefly, our records on this go back to 2006, when the Millers first attended a planning commission meeting and were told at that time that if their plan was to store fishing gear on their property, they could store it in a net house with a conditional use permit, or they could build a dwelling and store their gear in a garage as an accessory use to the dwelling. Several years passed, and in 2011, Planning and Zoning conducted a public hearing and considered a request from Aaron and Katrina Miller for a conditional use permit to allow a net shed at 107 Arnaz Heights. A CUP was issued with conditions. Two years after that, 2013, Planning and Zoning scheduled a review of the conditional use permit because the conditions had not been met. No net shed was ever built. Later in 2013, Aaron and Katrina Miller requested a change in zoning classification for the property. In December of that year, Planning and Zoning conducted a public hearing and unanimously recommended that the Borough Assembly change the zoning classification to Commercial Two. In April of 2014, the Assembly met and rejected the zoning request. That same month, the Millers were notified that they were in violation of the zoning ordinance as they were continuing to store commercial fishing gear. Staff also informed them that the 2011 conditional use permit had expired since they didn't satisfy the conditions within one year as required by the code. The following month, Aaron Miller appealed the decision by the building official that they were in violation. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the appeal and voted five-zero to deny the appeal. The commission at that time recognized that there were some accentuating circumstances, and they amended the notice and order of zoning violation and allowed them to keep their gear on there until December 31st, 2014. They also recommended that the Millers proceed and apply for another conditional use permit. The Millers did so, and in February 2015, the Millers were granted another conditional use permit by the planning commission with a vote of six-zero. In February, a letter was sent to the Millers issuing a conditional use permit for construction of a net house and detailing the conditions of the permit. That same month, Joe Aliberty filed an appeal of the planning commission's decision to issue a conditional use permit. In March of that year, the Assembly considered the issue and voted seven-oh, seven to zero to deny Mr. Aliberty's appeal. Fast forward to July 30th, the Millers submit a building permit application for construction of a fair hundred, 400-square-foot house. On August 3rd, the Community Development Department sent a letter to the Millers informing them that they did not meet the conditions of their conditional use permit. Specifically, they were supposed to construct a screening fence by August 1st, 2015, and that the planning commission would consider revocation of the permit at their next meeting. The following meeting, the planning commission did revoke the conditional use permit as required under municipal code, and the Millers were not present at the meeting. That same day, a certified letter was sent to the Millers informing them that their conditional use permit had been revoked, and they had 10 deals, 10 days to appeal the commission's decision to the Assembly. They did not appeal. On August 24th, a letter is sent to the Millers informing them that the revocation of their conditional use permit, with the revocation of the permit, they're in violation of the zoning and nuisance ordinances and have until September 28th to abate the nuisance without incurring any fines. On August 28th, a building permit is issued to the Millers. On September 24th, the Millers pick up their building permit. On September 28th, a visual inspection by building official reveals that the nuisance has not been abated. September 30th, certified notice and order is sent to the Millers, giving them until October 14th to abate, and that is the notice and order that they filed an appeal on. So going back to the original questions, was there a violation? And as I stated, the written appeal doesn't really deny that a violation occurred, but we can go through the two ordinances that we're referencing here. Title 19, which is a zoning ordinance, and Chapter 916, which is a nuisance ordinance. The way the nuisance ordinance works is if there is a, if there's a use of property contrary to the zoning ordinance, it is by definition a nuisance. And you can see in your packet at the bottom of page 12 and top of 13, the definition there, it's 916B5. Now, the way the zoning code works, only uses specifically permitted in a district are allowed, and these are either principal uses or accessory uses. And the principal use is defined in code saying it's the major or predominant use of a lot or parcel of land. In the case of a single-family residential district, a principal use is a one- or two-family dwelling. Once the principal use is established, the code allows for specific accessory or subordinate uses, such as a garage, off-street parking, and it also allows for other customary uses. We interpret use customarily incidental and subordinate to include storage of commercial fishing gear. This is why you see commercial fishing gear stored on residential lots in conjunction with a dwelling all throughout Service Area One. The accessory use is only allowed once the principal use is established. In this case, a dwelling must be established. A dwelling is intended for occupancy by a family and must be, meet building codes and have a certificate of occupancy. A building permit does not equal a dwelling. In this case, there is no dwelling on the property as shown in the photos on pages 26 and 27. Without a dwelling, there is no principal use established and therefore no accessory use allowed. Additionally, as shown in the photos, clearly the lot is being used solely for storage, which is not a principal use allowed in a single-family residential district. The second question is, is there selective enforcement? Prior to 2015, the borough zoning nuisance ordinance lacked any real teeth, and it was very difficult to enforce any violations. Enforcement consisted primarily of verbal requests and letters, and if the property owner didn't comply, that's pretty much where it ended. On April 6, 2015, the Borough Assembly adopted a revised nuisance ordinance by unanimous rule-call vote. There was no public testimony either in support or against the ordinance during public hearings on March 16th. Following adoption, we spent time within our department developing, developing a procedure that would give property owners ample opportunity to comply with code, with the code voluntarily, but also had consistent timelines and procedures. This was a new process. We decided to prioritize our efforts on longstanding violations and then also address new complaints as they came in. We have addressed eight violations since May. Four have been resolved, three... Four have been resolved, three are being followed up on, and one is the one that is currently under appeal. I think the summary of cases demonstrates quite clearly that we're not selecting certain types of cases over others. And I'll give you just a really quick summary. Wrangle Avenue, storage of a sane skiff in the right-of-way and that's been resolved. On Frederick Drive, storage of salvage materials in and along the right-of-way, which has been resolved. 105 Harness Heights, storage of materials, vehicles in single-family residential district, which is resolved. Sandy Beach Road, RV on a single-family residential district and camping, that was resolved. Ira 2, storage of commercial fishing equipment materials and vehicles in a single-family mobile home, that's ongoing. Skylark Way, a shipping container, which is an accessory structure in a multifamily residential district with no principal use, which would be a dwelling. That one's ongoing. Hoegally, storage of vehicle in a right-of-way, resolved. And Joe Street, storage of vehicles, boat trailer and other materials in a single-family residential district and that one is ongoing. And while I feel like I've been, I've already said this three times, but I'll just say it one more time, that the two questions that needed to be answered are whether a violation occurred and if there is selective enforcement. I think we've established that the parcel is located in a single-family residential district. There is no principal use, a dwelling as required on the lot. Therefore, there can be no accessory use, i.e. storage on the lot. As referenced previously, the photos provide evidence that there is no dwelling, but there is storage. It's clearly a violation of Title 19 and by definition, a violation of Title 19 is a nuisance. Enforcement under the nuisance ordinance passed in April has not been selective. Enforcement action has not been limited just to just the Millers. It's not been limited to just Arness Heights or has it been limited just to commercial fishing gear? Enforcement actions have covered different issues at various locations throughout Service Area 1. We can't enforce the ordinance everywhere at once. We really, we don't have the staff to do that, but we are trying to prioritize longstanding violations and then new resident complaints as they come in and we do expect to continue enforcing the ordinance. And I just wanted to address some of the issues that Erin brought up too. You stated that they've used the lot for storage legally and as long as they had the conditional use permit granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in place, the Planning Commission was allowing them to continue to store gear. Once that conditional use permit is revoked, then that use of that land is revoked and so then they're no longer storing legally. And that's why they were given violations in the past. They also mentioned that they didn't receive the three neighbor complaints as required under the nuisance violation. The three neighbor complaints are required only in the case where it's an unsightly condition. That's a fairly subjective argument to make and we sort of let the neighborhood decide whether someone's yard is unsightly. That's very different than actually being in violation of the zoning ordinance. So, it's two different sections of the nuisance ordinance. When you're in violation, you don't need to have those three complaints. That there were no findings of fact, findings of fact are not required under the nuisance ordinance. We provide factual evidence like photographic evidence to support our findings. And that it's not a violation, that storage is allowed. And yes, it's allowed as an accessory use in conjunction with a dwelling. So, you do see it around town, but it's under certain conditions. I think that was pretty much it.
Yeah. Joe, you have nothing to say?
I have nothing to say.
So, if I'm following the process that's been presented to us correctly, the owners of properties affected by the notice and order for nuisance abatement may present testimony and/or give argument. And then, public testimony may be presented. Mr. Murgas, did you want to, can you sign it? Did you sign it?
Ms. Brennan, can I interject something, please?
Yes.
I think it would be appropriate for Ms. Cabrera to identify the documents that she's been referring to. I mean, not including the code sections in that, but the timeline, the photographs, and also the notice of nuisance abatement, that should be separately identified for the record and also any documents indicating service of that notice on the property owner, Mr. Miller.
I believe they're all in the packet that everybody has had presented to them and I think it's available to the public as well.
I'm aware of that, Mr. Mayor, but I think they need to be placed into the record in this appeal, so she needs to identify each of them.
Okay, can she do that by the page in the packet or is there a, well, I mean...
Yes, she can do it that way.
Okay, Liz, you've got the order of stuff there.
Okay, let's see. Let's see. The notice and order letter is page 20 and 22. I believe that covers, let me just check. 20, 21, and 22, and that covers the notice and also the certified letter card. Let's see, page 23 is the Miller's appeal document. Page 24 and 25 is the chronology that I provided of the history of the issue. Page 26, 27 has the photographs, photographic evidence. Page 28 and 29 is a summary of recent enforcement actions. And then, page 30 has a timeline of the adoption of the nuisance ordinance. And then, I also mentioned, referenced some of the passages from Title 19 and also from Chapter 916, the nuisance ordinance, which are also in your packets, pages 5 through 7, 8 through 10, and 11 through 17. And since I've mentioned almost everything, I'll just say page 18 and 19 was the letter letting them know that there was an initial violation.
And the revocation.
And that they needed to abate.
That there was a revocation.
Oh, that there was a revocation of, thank you. A revocation of their conditional use permit.
Okay, we'll consider that information read into the record. Now, the owners of properties affected by the notice and order for nuisance abatement may present testimony and/or argument or public testimony. Mr. Murgas, did you want to, did you sign the sheet? It looks like you might be the only one. Is anybody else interested in giving public testimony before we get started? If you are, we'll swear, bringing in at once. Looks like only one. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, is there another opportunity to testify or is that just it?
I believe the appellant will be allowed time for responsive argument.
I can bring up witnesses too.
Let me ask for a clarification. Under the appellant being allowed time, Mr. Brennan, for additional testimony, is he allowed more witnesses?
Yes.
Okay. And if they've been sworn in, then they're good to go, I suppose, so. All right, John.
My name is John Murgas. I am a property owner immediately to the north of the affected property, out of south. I am here because I was invited by the borough as a nearby property owner. The letter I received was very brief and it did not go into any of the details that are in the ordinance that Liz reviewed. The letter did refer to the term nuisance and so when I first received it, you know, things get kind of slow in Petersburg this time of year. Must be something juicy going on up there. So, I walked up to the lot with my dog and walked around. I can't find any nuisance. That lot is neat, it is clean, has commercial fishing gear stored there, which is what drives our community. I did pace off the area that was used by the commercial fishing gear. I apologize, I didn't ask for property owner's permission. And it is less than 10% of the square footage of the lot. Relatively small amount. 90% is not being used for storage of commercial fishing gear. And so, I don't see a nuisance there. And if I'm limited only to what the ordinance says, I can say, but I'm going to interject another sentence or two here, that if, if the borough has a zero tolerance of the zoning regulation, you better start planning a bigger jail than what you already got planned because you don't have to go very far before you see...
I think we're getting offside of the appeal.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your testimony.
Before we move on from public testimony, is there anybody else who would like to testify? Give everybody a chance to decide who wants to stand up. Seeing none, Mr. Miller is allowed time for responsive argument and may have witnesses for additional testimony in support of his appeal.
Okay, I'm ready. I need to dig up Title 19. I've got so many papers in front of me here. Okay. Here you can have that back there. I believe, I would like actually Liz to reread her description of principal uses as per the code, as it's written here in Title 19. She gave a rather extensive description of it, but if Title 19 is the legal definition, what it says is very brief. It says the following are principal permitted uses. This is 1920, 020. I'll give you guys a minute to find that. On your packet, it should be.
Yeah, what page was it on, Erin? Is there a page on the bottom right-hand?
Yeah, I think this is very important. We should probably find it.
Top right corner of the pages?
Page eight, right?
It's 11, isn't it?
On my packet, it's page eight.
Oh, okay.
17 on ours.
Now, once again, the Building and Economic Development officials' definition is subjective and rather extensive. And I think it's open to multiple interpretations as it's written here, so I believe everyone who reads it has a different opinion and, you know, some are biased and some are not. It'd be nice to see perhaps, I don't know if a tribunal's the right, a board of review anyway, to give us a better definition, something more solid. This is super vague. I'll read it here. I'm sure everybody's here now. Principal use is permitted on residential lots. This is 192020. The following are principal permitted uses. One and two family dwellings and twin houses, public parks and playgrounds. Right below it, 192030, accessory use is permitted. The following are permitted accessory uses in these districts. Private garages and required off-street parking, greenhouses and tool sheds. Uses in structures which are customarily accessory, clearly subordinate to permitted uses. I don't see anywhere here where it says storage is not a permitted use. As a matter of fact, it says right here, customarily accessory. That's fishing gear. You can't get much more customarily than that in Petersburg. It's what the town was founded on, fishing. Anyways, that's what the codes read. Now, you could look at it all kinds of different ways. It's a prime example of subjectivity. I mean, you can read, it's open to so many different interpretations, it's staggering. Anyways, her definition was, you know, her opinion of it or Joseph's opinion of it, or your lawyer's opinion of it. You know, if lawyers were always right, we wouldn't have any lawsuits. This is just completely vague and I think it's wrong. Let's see, what else? Okay, yeah, reread the ordinances. We're in violation technically of the nuisance order. I'd like to reread that one too because it's super, it's super vague also.
Which one?
I think it's worthy of rereading. That's five, yeah. Remember, we were sitting at that right there. Yeah. Okay, technically, we are in violation of, dang.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, yeah. Thanks. Unlawful enumeration, I guess. Description of violation, once again, this is our description of the violation of the nuisance order. Violation of Title 19, storage in a single-family residential district. And we're in violation of number five there. It's page 12 in my packet, bottom right-hand. And then, it continues over to page 13. Anyways, it says, "Any building or structure set up, erected, built, moved, or maintained or any use of property contrary to the provisions of Title 19." Wow. Title 19 is 80-some pages. It's, you know, how can everybody possibly comply to every, every single... Anyways, it's super vague too and subject to multiple interpretations right there. Provisions of Title 19, I mean, that's 80 pages. It doesn't even say where to look for this violation. Title 19's 80 pages. God damn. Is there anything else we want to say? We, you know, we required the building permit with intent to put up a principal use. I think that intent right there is good enough to, as proof that we, you know, we have the intent to have a permitted use, principal permitted use. Oh, yeah, we let the CUP lapse because we were told the most we could get is 30-day extension from the Development Department. That wasn't going to do us any good. We had a poor season this year. We couldn't afford spending $20,000 on a fence. We priced it out, 25 probably. Couldn't do it. I mean, we, we spent $12,000 on filling in our lot in preparation for the fence. The fence wasn't going to be a slap-together thing. According to the CUP, it was stringent and expensive. Six-foot cyclone fence, I think it was 600 feet of it.
With privacy slats.
With privacy slats. And it was just unaffordable this year. Couldn't do it. And a 30-day extension wasn't going to do us any good. So, we chose a different avenue. We got the building permit and we thought that would satisfy the building official for the time being and we'd be able to continue the use of our lot. Obviously, we were mistaken and here we are. You know, I'm not a lawyer.
Just small businesses.
Yeah, we're just small business owners and I really don't want to fight the city. Look what I'm stacked up against. I can't compete. We can't compete. So, I guess what we're asking for is a little common sense from the board of review here One minute, please. Oh, I need that letter. Damn. It just fell out.
Did you bring it?
Yeah.
I don't know where it is.
Yeah, it must be in the car. No, it's not here.
Do you need... Do you need five minutes, Aaron? We can take a five-minute break.
Yeah, that'd be great. I misplaced the letter I wrote.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene at, well, ten o'clock. Let's give it ten minutes.
Twenty-minute round trip deal here going, so I was gonna just stand down for a little bit. Looks like I got a chance to talk again at the end here. We'll save the letter for then. I just want to make sure I'm conveying my message, you know, and getting my point across.
Well, let me call the meeting back to order.
Okay.
We'll call the meeting back to order. It's about ten o'clock. This is a public hearing for the appeal of the abatement order by the borough from Aaron Miller. Okay, I'm sorry, Aaron. Then Aaron Miller is still giving responsive argument here.
Yeah, I think I've accomplished what I needed to here at this point. Katrina's gonna get the letter, and she'll be here in about twenty minutes, so I guess we can continue on with the public testimony, if there's any.
Did you have?
Is it possible to ask Aaron a couple of questions?
Assembly members only can ask questions of the two parties.
I've got two questions, actually three. My first question is, when did you buy the property?
I think it was 2006.
And what was it zoned at that time?
Residential.
And then my last question is, and how have you been using the property since that time?
Immediately, 2006, we were storing gear. We bought it with the intention, and the people who sold it to us knew what we were gonna do.
Okay.
Any other assembly members have questions at this point? Do you have any witnesses that are gonna?
Jason Miller, I think, expressed that he wanted to talk again.
And I believe you could call witnesses, and you've already been sworn in, Jason, so if you'd like to.
Whatever, there's a microphone.
You know, can you hear me? Okay, all right, I'll sit forward. I just have a question, I don't know if that can be posed to the assembly or not, or maybe the officials, but the question I have is, and I'm sure this has come up before, when you're enforcing something like this, and I know it's the abatement, the nuisance issue, but the question, I guess, I'm trying to get at ultimately, is if they were to build something there, are there any public utilities that they have access to?
You know, I don't know if that's, that's a good question, but I don't know if that's one that's relevant to the appeal to this abatement today.
I understand, just in my mind, it is, and that's how I see it, because if you were to build something there, are there utilities there? So why would you expect someone to build something there if there isn't?
Yeah.
That's just my question.
We're getting off track, by the way.
Yeah, that's just a question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I elaborate on that?
It's not really, start what you have on your mind, Aaron.
Okay, yeah, we're, you know, we've developed this land, and I think we've added value up there.
Oh, by the fill and the?
By the fill, yeah. You know, once again, we're, we're here because we ran out of money. We spent as much as we could, you know, trying to improve the lot and getting it ready for the fencing.
Thank you. So is there any sort of cross-examination by the department director or the appellant? I guess Aaron kind of brought up some questions of your testimony earlier, Liz, so if you have any questions or?
Could he tell me what the question is, actually? Because I wasn't sure, like, he asked, he said he had questions, but I'm not really clear on what the actual question was in there.
I think I've had to, Kurt, you?
One of the questions that I was hearing was, out of the eighty pages of this Title Nine zoning, can you be more specific to exactly which, which subsection that you gravitated towards in which to give him that abatement nuisance, or that nuisance?
Which part of Title 19 he's violating?
Yes.
So we can, if you turn to Title 19.
Is this in our packet? Or is it the whole?
I can help you out, it's nineteen.
The same thing that we were.
She's flitter. Okay.
It's in both, but, let's see if I can find it. So it's page seventeen.
Is that in the Title 19?
Yeah, in the big one. At the bottom, page seventeen. So as I mentioned in my testimony, there's two allowable uses on a residential, in a lot, there's a principal use and an accessory use.
And this is under section 1920.020?
Exactly. So the principal use in the zoning district where this property is, single-family residential, is one and two family dwellings and twin house dwellings. So there is no other principal, well, there's the playground, but that doesn't really apply, right? So there's, that's the principal use. And then if you turn the page and go on to the accessory uses permitted, these accessory uses are only allowed once you have the principal use established.
Subjective.
We could, after she's done, testify, Aaron.
I think common sense is how you describe that. It's pretty clear in the definition of accessory use, and that's at the very beginning, page one on Title 17. Accessory use means a use customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the land building or structure and located on the same lot or parcel of land. So the accessory use must be incidental, it's not the primary thing, it must be subordinate, it's not the primary thing. You have to have the primary use established, and then you gain, as the property owner, all the benefits that come with the accessory use. It doesn't say in here anywhere that accessory use includes storage of commercial fishing gear, but that is how we interpret it, and I think it's a liberal interpretation that works for our community, so.
Yes. Jake, you'll have to line me up now if I'm off-topic with my question, okay? So, for Mr. Miller, in, at the March 16th meeting of this year, minute, the thirty-seven minute mark, for anyone who feels like cross-referencing it, I asked you a question about if the conditional use permit was going to be reasonable and accomplishable, and you answered yes, it was. And I followed up, and I asked you if you were confident in that. Again, you answered yes, it is. So I guess my question is, why are we talking about it now instead of, okay, like you said, we don't have enough money to get this done this year, why didn't you go to the zoning board and say, "This isn't gonna happen, and what can we do to make this right"? Is that, I don't know, is that on topic enough to ask?
I think so, about the, this part, this part of, not up to this, it's a...
I was out fishing, Katrina actually did call the Economic Development Department while I was gone, and they said we might get an extension of thirty days, but don't hope for any more than that, and that wasn't gonna cut it. We didn't, you know, the money wasn't gonna be there in thirty days. We'd already made it, and it wasn't gonna be enough.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions? I was confident at the time, Janet, I apologize. You know, fishing's volatile, and we had huge ups and downswings, and this happened to be a downswing. We spent what we could on the lot and got it ready for the fence, and that's as far as we could get, and we figured the thirty-day extension wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna help us, so we tried a different avenue with the building permit, and that obviously wasn't good enough to satisfy the building official, so, you know, here we are.
Thank you, Aaron, I appreciate it. Thanks. Any other assembly members have, you had a question, Bob?
I believe Liz had a comment before.
Yeah, I saw her hand was up, I see if there's any other assembly members.
Yeah, I want to go back to your point, Liz, on the, how, how have we interpreted the one, the one and two family dwellings on residential lot? Is there a size limitation, or what's required? Has, or has that changed over time?
I'm gonna let Joe answer that, because it's dictated by building codes more than the actual zoning code.
The size of a house you built on a dwelling is dictated by the codes. You have to have one room that's 120 square feet, you have to have sanitation, cooking, facilities, so there really is no size limit on what you can put on it, but it has to be, follow all the codes, it has to pass the final inspection, it has to have a certificate of occupancy before it is a habitable dwelling.
Okay, any other questions by assembly members of either parties? Liz, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to address that thirty-day extension. I've never spoken to Aaron and Katrina about a thirty, about going back to the Planning Commission, they've never contacted me about that, and I don't know where this information that there can only be a thirty-day extension came from. It's certainly not in the ordinance book. That would be up to the commission to decide on whether they should have gotten an extension or not to give them an extension, and they were notified that their conditional use permit was going to be on the commission's agenda for revocation, and that would have been the opportune time to come and discuss it with the commission, and they did not attend that hearing, so just wanted to add.
Thank you.
That almost sounds like a question for me, or it was almost addressed to me. Do I have a chance to respond to that?
Yes, and then if there's no more new evidence gonna be presented by either side, I think we're gonna move on to the, you know, after the argument is completed, this is H on our list here, "The Borough Assembly shall close the argument portion of the hearing and will proceed with motion matters and deliberations to decide the appeal. Decision must be rendered within ten days." We have a ten-day window, we can postpone that, but there will be no new evidence after this, so go ahead, Aaron, if you have new testimony, if you have some response to the... Liz there?
Yeah, I do. My wife told me that, she, she contacted the Business Development Department, and they told her, I'm not sure who, forty days would probably be all we could get, so we decided to go with the building application, and we have the permit. You know, we got it, so we thought that would be, you know, adequate, and obviously, it's The CUP, it was revoked, I think, August 11th. That's pretty poor time for Sam and Sandra to be in town trying to comply with zoning ordinances. Then my wife was pursuing the building permit application, and she had, her mother broke both of her wrists at that time, I think, too, so she was out of town. Anyway, you know, we did our best to comply, and here we are.
Okay, Katrina's, Aaron's wife Katrina is back, so we'll see if there's new information. Is there anything new, Aaron, to present?
Yeah, what, where exactly are we right now in the?
We're down to where you have the allowable time to response, to response to the borough's argument.
Is that number five?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just about done.
And you could cross-examine, I guess, is where you're asking one other questions, not being a judge.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and read this letter, if that's okay. It'll take a couple minutes.
And this pertains specifically to the appeal of the abatement order?
As much as, you know, we're side there, and, you know, they've gotten off-topic, too.
I mean, this doesn't talk about changing ordinances or anything.
No, this, no, it doesn't.
Okay, we'll see, go ahead.
"We are commercial fishermen. Fishing profits and losses are highly volatile. We've had a huge decrease in income the past few seasons, right on the back of a few good seasons. This makes financial planning for a family hard. We pay the necessities first, and hopefully we have enough discretionary income left to spend on non-necessities. Unfortunately, we did not have enough left this year to fulfill the very stringent obligations of the CUP issued to us this spring. However, we still made improvements and worked diligently towards making the obligations of the CUP. We walked in an entire lot, it was phase one of our plan. We then moved on to phase two, and got a quote from Pac Rim for the fencing, it was $15,000 for the fencing material by the time it got here, in addition, $8,000, $10,000 for the labor, additional equipment rental and concrete needed for the installation. Keep in mind that the fence necessary to comply with the CUP was six-foot cyclone fencing with green privacy slats. A total of 600 feet, very expensive and a huge job. Unfortunately, we had a very poor season this year and decided not to purchase the fence. We later called the Economic Development Department and asked if we could extend the time allotted on CUP for the completion of the fence. The advisor told us we might not get, we might get an additional thirty days, maybe. The deadline to complete the fence was August 1st, and additional thirty days is not going to help us. We brainstormed and decided to apply for a building permit. We applied for the building permit on July 30th, one day before the CUP deadline for the fence completion. We believe that the building permit and the money paid for it would satisfy the building official, and this would allow us continued use of the lot. I think the building permit cost over 500 bucks. We were informed a few days later, on August 3rd, by the building official that our fence is not completed and that the Planning Commission was going to meet on August 11th to consider revocation of our CUP. On said date, the Planning Commission revoked the CUP. On August 24th, we received notice that our CUP was revoked and our lot was now in violation of Title 19 because storage is not an allowable use in residential codes. We did some research on that and then called the Code Enforcement Officer for his interpretation. We could not find anywhere in Title 19 of the Borough Code that states specifically "Storage is not an allowable use in residential lots." He then explained his interpretation of the code. He stated that our lot has no allowed principal use, therefore, storage and accessory uses are not allowed. We've read that 1920, 02, numerous times, I'm sure we've got all memorized by now, but it doesn't say that, doesn't say, doesn't specifically say that storage is not an allowable use anywhere. We then reread the codes and still weren't convinced that we were in violation. Nowhere in the codes can we find the pertinent law stating that storage and accessory uses are not allowed without a principal use, i.e. dwelling completed first. The codes are vague about this and prone to misinterpretations and subjective. I believe that our current building permit approved and paid for should suffice its intent for a principal use, and therefore, the storage should be allowed. The only legal means to change permitted uses of land or dwelling is through a rezon. We put one before the Borough Assembly, April 2nd last year. They struck it down, even though it had not enough support from the P&amp;Z. At the very least, we would like to gain out of this appeal is a stay on abatement and fines until we have another chance at rezoning this property. I think with the new light shed on the zoning ordinance shortcomings and the addition of new council member, we will have a much better chance at successfully rezoning. The front of our lot abuts immediately industrial land with absolutely no buffer. The State of Alaska land statutes state that whenever possible, a buffer should be placed between industrial and residential land. Rezone our property to commercial two, and that buffer will be in place. Or use the road at the rear of a property as the buffer, as recommended by your counsel, R.N.G. Frederick, R.N.G. Erickson at the appraisal company of Alaska. And I'll read that letter real quick here. I got it.
I think we're getting off of the topic a little bit. I think...
Yeah, okay, just a little, you can see here, Mark, please. I'll try to read it fast. This, this letter was addressed to Ms. Liz Cabrera, February 11th, 2015. It was from appraisal company of Alaska. Says, "Dear Ms. Cabrera, at your request and that of Mr. Joseph Alberti, I have reviewed the potential impact to residential property values. The issuance of a conditional use permit would have in Hungerford Hills area. The main point of concern is whether the issuance of the subject permit would adversely impact the value of residential land in the immediate area. Specifically, this permit would allow for the construction and operation of a net storage facility, with my understanding that all operations associated would be of an interior nature. No outside storage of materials would be utilized. I completed two-sided inspections of the area last week, and considering current development in the immediate area, which is a construction business in close proximity, it is my opinion that issuance of the subject permit would not adversely affect property values. In fact, the proposed use of the property appears to be of lower impact, as immediately budding area currently has a significant amount of heavy equipment storage and other commercial industrial materials. It is my opinion this would have a greater impact on surrounding prop- would have a greater impact on surrounding properties than the contemplated usage. However, this land utilization predates residential development in the area. As a side note, an existing subdivision roadway acts as a natural buffer between residential and heavy commercial uses at this time. As a former planning director and University of Research fellow in rural, urban and regional planning, I have experience in addressing matters of this nature." Now, I'll just stop there.
Cindy, who's the question for us?
I actually have a question for Liz because some of the contention seems to be the interpretation of the ordinance. And I recall when we, the Assembly was asked, I believe, to consider the change in zoning, that there was some information presented to the Assembly on, I believe it was state, state planning regulations and interpretation. Is there something that you can point to that underpins our logic for our zoning regulations as far as accessory and primary use of a property? I may not have asked that question very clear. What I'm asking is, is there state precedent that would establish that this is a clear ordinance?
The state does not provide guidance on, in statute, on how we write our ordinances and our land use. But I think if you go through and look at almost every other community in the country and look at their zoning ordinance, they pretty much lay out a zone, a principal use, some more specific, some more liberal, and then, you know, what's allowed in that area and then how that area can be developed. And usually, much more stringently than we do here. But it's, it's a pretty standard practice. And I think if you speak to the Borough Attorney, it's the, pretty much the common sense interpretation of how the ordinance is constructed and how it's interpreted. Hope that answers your question.
Any other questions? Well, I think if there's no new information from either side in their argument, it's time for the-
Can I say something, please?
If you want to be sworn in.
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. This is Katrina Miller. While I was gone, Aaron said that Liz said she didn't say the thirty days. And so, we were outside in the hallway here and it was our last conditional use permit meeting. Aaron was out of town fishing. And I asked, "Do you think we could get an extension if we needed it to put in our fence?" And she said, "You could probably get thirty days." So, that's what that was about.
Okay, well, we're not going to start arguing over that.
I just wanted to state it in the record.
Starting to stray off of our task here. And our, so I'm going to, at this time, entertain a motion by an Assembly member to either affirm, reverse, or modify the notice and order of the nuisance abatement. And then we'll start our discussion. I feel that we've all, we, public testimony has had, the public has had plenty of time to testify if they wanted to. And, you know, I think we've heard things a little bit off of the track here, just talking about just the appeal to the abatement. Aaron, you have one more thing to say?
I have one more thing and it's definitely pertinent here. I called Wrangle and they've never abated anybody for a-
That has nothing to do with the Petersburg Borough Code, in my opinion. But go ahead and, that's their code. This is the one we have.
And Petersburg doesn't either.
Okay, so that's for past history. Liz?
I just want to address that. I did receive an email from Carol Rushmore, who's the Economic Development Coordinator and Community Development Coordinator.
Aaron?
And to email to me-
I'll send it.
-in response to Aaron Miller. You brought it up. I did not bring it up.
Okay, that's, I don't know that this is even pertinent, what Wrangle has done in the past. This is about an abatement hearing?
Mm-hmm.
An appeal hearing for an abatement order from the Petersburg Borough. It's not about what Wrangle has done. I mean, if we want to change our code-
No, that's fine. If he's raised the issue, I feel like I should be able to address it.
You respond and then we'll leave it at that.
Okay, that's fine. So, she emailed me in response to-
I didn't ask the question, Mark, Aaron?
Aaron's phone call and-
Cut me off. Let's take a little break here and gain our composure. So, we're going to read those into the record. Aaron, those letters, we're going to enter those into the record, the letters. Are we done, Mark? We're back on. So, I still think it's kind of irrelevant what other communities have done. You made a comment about Wrangle hasn't abated any land use. And then Liz was responding to that, I believe. That's where we were at there when we kind of started talking over one another. So, if you wait your turn and let Liz finish her story or her testimony, it's not a story, it will give you one more chance to respond. And then if Liz has a rebuttal, we'll do that. And then I think it's time to move on to what kind of a position the borough's going to take on this. Liz?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I did get an email from Carol Rushmore. And you're right, it's not really relevant to what goes on here. But they did have a similar situation of storage without a residence. And the property owner ended up building a house to comply. And they said, she said, "It wasn't a good situation and we still get complaints," but they do, they are complying with the, with the code. So, it's not, I would say, unique to Petersburg. It does occur in other communities.
Okay, thank you. Aaron?
Yeah, it sounds like they were accommodating and they allowed the property owner a question there. Time to, you know, do what he had to do. That's what we're asking for, too. That's exactly what we're trying to do. Same thing. You know, we have a building permit for a house and we have a lot filled in. We're getting ready to do this. So, we're doing the exact same thing. Sounds like Wrangle figured it out. We should be able to figure it out, too.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the testimony and cross-examination. And I'll entertain a motion to move this forward.
I will make a motion to affirm the order of nuisance abatement.
Is there a second?
To what is the motion?
To affirm the order of nuisance abatement.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion's been made by Member Loganoakas and seconded by Member Strand to affirm the nuisance abatement order. Discussion, Assembly.
You want me to give a rationale or are we good?
Go.
I said, do you, I'm asking the rest of the Assembly if they need a rationale or if we're good.
Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, once again, it's Jim Brennan. I'm not hearing Assembly members' comments.
I'm sorry. I'm, I was asking the rest of the Assembly if they-
Maybe because my microphone's on.
-needed a rationale for my making my motion or if they were fine with the testimony that they've heard.
Did you hear the motion?
Yes, I heard the motion. And if I could just advise, I think it would be good to put a rationale for the motion on the record. Yes.
We were just getting that. The Member Loganoakas who made the motion was going to, I believe, use the rationale for making the motion how she did.
I understand what the concern of Aaron and Katrina. However, I asked them what the property was zoned, when they bought the property. They were aware that it was zoned residential. It's very clear in the ordinance that there must be a primary use and the primary use of that property is as a residential property. And that has not been established on that property since 2006. There have been two conditional use permits, the terms of which have not been met and are no longer in existence. And so, I find that the Planning Department has acted responsibly and is just trying to enforce our ordinances as the Assembly has approved them.
Any other discussion by Assembly members?
Oh, go ahead, Kurt.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where common sense comes into a court of law. I mean, we were asked at one, and this is may not totally pertinent, but this is how my thinking goes. We were asked at one time to look at a situation and assume that that's what happened. Well, I don't like to operate on assumptions and I don't like to operate on what I would like to say is common sense. I can see some holes in the ordinance. I mean, does this mean that we go back and plug those holes? I mean, that's how ordinance get as complicated as they do because they see places where people can take advantage of these ordinances because it's not specifically clear. And I would hate to think that we could carry this into the Supreme Court because there is some unclarity in this ordinance and we have to use common sense, even though I would like to say that I have exceptional common sense or exceptional sense that I could apply that it was bought as a single-family dwelling. It was bought not as a commercial zone piece of property. It was, the CUPs were not met. I mean, I have a lot of reasons why I should probably vote for this affirmative. But on the other hand, I'm going to vote no against this because I don't like the idea that it's not so specific that there would be holes in it. So, I mean, that's going to be my rationale for voting no against this. So, I, you guys can vote how you want, but.
Jay, did you have a comment? Anybody else have a comment?
Jay had, did-
Go ahead, Bob. I'm reframing.
I'm still debating my own mind which way to move on it. There's two issues here. The one that we originally addressed was zoning issue. I see that just keep coming back and back on the table. What we're dealing with is a nuisance part of that. And what are we looking at, the second or the third order here? So, how many times, I agree with common sense, you know? And if they can't do it and we extend, we're sent back to planning and zoning, do you give them another, do you give them another, you know, year, two years, three years? How long does it take? What's the process that would take to do it? You know, I don't know the answer to my question either. And that's some of the dilemma I have in my own mind is what's reasonable. And so, frankly, right now, I don't know which one I'm going to jump on it.
Okay. I think Kurt said some of that very well. I have lots of empathy for the Millers. It was a poor fishing season. I have no doubts of your intent to follow through on this. We talked about it April 14 and March of 2015. I recall those discussions clearly. I researched them out to hear all the words that were said. But the flip side is Liz mentioned that the, at least by their interpretation, that by definition, it fits, you know, it fits a nuisance, meaning here we are at this. And Kurt also mentioned the idea of common sense. Yeah, you're a fisherman. Common sense says you're going to store gear. And that's just my two cents at least on that. Yeah, I guess I'm still wrestling with this myself right now. I don't have anything else.
Nancy?
Might as well. The thing is, you're a fisherman. You're going to store gear. You probably should store it on the residential lot that's had its accessory use met or a commercial or industrial lot where it's allowed without there being a residence. And somewhere I made the note, Aaron himself read those definitions of accessory and, so, that's-
I guess I'm the only one that has a comment. And I will have to say that this is not a fun position to be in. Listening to both sides of the story, we've discussed this issue for the last, you know, number of months. And, you know, I do understand financial hardships, but I also understand rules that are made and agreements that are made. And at some point, you have to enforce what's on the books, how it got there or not. And if you don't like it, you go back to the Assembly and planning and zoning and you change it. You know, there might be some vagueness in this ordinance, but as it was explained, it sounds like in order to have commercial gear stored on residential property, you first must have a dwelling that has a certificate of occupancy with it. So, I'm in favor of the motion. And that's kind of a hard way to vote, knowing the nature of my businesses that I'm in. But that's one of the wonderful things about being in this non-paying position. So, is there any more discussion? The clerk called the roll.
Could you restate the motion that's on the table, Mr.?
W, do you have it written?
Yes, the motion is to affirm the order for nuisance abatement.
A yes vote would, you know, you'd understand the vote. Continue with the vote, please.
Nancy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kurt?
No.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Okay, the abatement order passes five to one. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor say aye. All right.